Okay, we'll reconvene the City Commission meeting after executive session for attorney-client privileges. Need a motion for action coming out of executive session.
I move to grant Mayor Ames and David Dillner the authority to represent the city of El Dorado's interests at mediation with GBA and GBA builders.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And any further question or comment? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Okay, moving on to next on our agenda would be the consent agenda. These items were sent to us earlier in the week, or later last week. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If none, I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And any further comments? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Old business is none. New business, there we don't have any new business to talk about today either. So that moves us on to reports.
The youth commission met last Monday and finalized their plans for their yearly community project. And this year they're having a park cleanup day on May 5th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00. And they're having T-shirts made that say, "Stopping pollution is the best solution." They are asking for volunteers from the community, as well as any organizations that might want to help out. The staging area, we will start out here in front of City Hall on May 5th and be given directions as to which park to go. Any organization or person who wants to volunteer needs to contact Tabitha Sharp at the city. And again, the city's number is 321-9100. Tabitha, do you have anything else to say to that?
You've got it all. Good job.
And yes, I think we all should show up. Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
I don't have anything either.
Neither one of my boards met since the last time we have met. I really don't have anything today.
Okay. Couple things, Main Street is going to have a Main Street Forum tomorrow. And it's going to be, it's located at the El Dorado Arms, which is downtown on South Main. The topic is, "Go with the flow, pipelines working for you." It's going to be a presentation, I think, from the many representative pipelines in the area, talking about how they interact with the communities. It's an education opportunity for them to educate our community on what the pipelines are. We have many of them around here. Plus an opportunity to introduce Main Street to those entities and build a relationship there. So it's talking with Emily Canal. There's been quite a lot of excitement from the pipeline companies to have this venue and this opportunity to speak publicly. They have obligations to do that. And so they seemed very appreciative of the opportunity to have an audience. So if you're available tomorrow at noon at the El Dorado Arms, you'd be welcome for that. It starts at, I have it at 11:00 AM on my calendar, is that right? Yeah.
Where is the El Dorado Arms?
El Dorado Arms is on the southeast corner of South Main and Pine Street. Apartments, there used to be a restaurant down the basement of that building and now it's opened back up for, I think, is that correct? Is it in the lower level of that building?
Yeah.
Open to the public. Anybody who wants to come is certainly welcome. Next I have, just came from this afternoon, a session with the visioning team for Project Wichita. They are organizing their focus groups and we should be hearing more about some focus groups here in El Dorado. Working with Inc. and Chamber and Main Street, as well as Augusta, to talk about what are good opportunities for focus groups for that effort. Pretty interesting. So more to come on that. We'll be spending May and June doing focus groups and then it'll move into identifying themes that may come out of that. On a fairly fast pace with that, which is good. And that's all I have for reports at this point.
All right, I've got a couple of things. First thing that I wanted to communicate to you all is the Government Finance Officers Association is pleased to announce that the state of El Dorado has received GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the city and reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves, has a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. So the city has received a Designated Budget Presentation Award and a Certificate of Recognition for Budget Presentation to the individual or department designated primarily as being responsible for having achieved the award. And I think we've been able to meet this criteria for several years in a row. So it's good that we can continue that designation. And then I have a couple of things that I need some direction from the commission on. So one thing that we had talked about prior to, in a study session, was the tall grass and weeds and we kind of thrown that around a little bit. I wanted to just kind of give you an update on where that stood. I don't necessarily need commission direction at this point in time on it. But what we're planning to do is we are going to do a, we're going to continue a proactive enforcement. But in lieu of our prior practice of sending letters to property owners and then issuing a mow order, and then the Parks and Recreation Department would go out and mow lots that were not in compliance, we're going to pivot our enforcement strategy and utilize another section of our ordinance that allows us to, we're going to continue to notify property owners. We're also going to, so we have to send them a certified letter and give them, I believe it's 10 days to come into compliance. But in addition to that, we're also going to send tenants a courtesy letter that, well, a door hanger or a courtesy notice of sorts, so that they know that their property is out of compliance as well. And if they don't come to compliance within the 10-day time period, as required by city ordinance, then we are going to issue them a citation to appear in municipal court. And then the municipal prosecutor and judge will adjudicate the case and give them a timeframe for remedying the situation. The goal of this is to have the property owner or tenant, as the case may be, address the issue themselves versus the city having to go out and actually take care of it. And then if they don't, within a reasonable timeframe, we'll mow, we'll do the mow order and be assessing those costs to the property owner.
You're going to send the summons to the tenant or to the property owner?
So by ordinance and by state law, we have to send the actual summons to the property owner as they are responsible for the property. But the courtesy notice, the hope is that with the courtesy notice, the tenant will do their part to take care of the situation. As the code enforcement officer will tell you, the majority of our nuisance complaints are addressed with those courtesy notices. So the hope is that by providing a courtesy notice to the tenant, as well as to the property owner, we can hopefully nip some of this stuff before it requires further enforcement action.
I like that. It gives, lets them know they're out of compliance before hitting them with the summons. I mean, it's just kind of a...
I appreciate the fact that you're also notifying the tenant.
In addition to that, we're also going to take another step, which we're preparing for alternative purposes, we'll call them yard signs. And the purpose will be, we'll actually install these or place them in the yard that is not in compliance. And it serves two purposes. Number one, to let the property owner or tenant, whoever's residing on the property, or who happens to be taking care of the property or not taking care of the property, know that they are not in compliance and will provide some provisions for coming into compliance. But perhaps more importantly, it will allow the neighborhood to know that enforcement activities are taking place. Because sometimes people don't necessarily know what's happening in the background. But by putting the sign prominently on display in their yards, the neighborhood will know that enforcement actions are being taken.
And how long do you think that sign will stay there?
Well, we don't, you know, the over-under on that is probably two hours. But it's the intent, I think, that is meant to do that.
About as long as the orange stickers stay on the cars.
Right.
Those are hard to get off.
Yeah.
So hopefully, and if a property owner does get to court, there are potential fines associated with this. But again, the intent is not to collect fines, the intent is to have folks mow and keep track of their yard. So that is ultimately the goal and that's the hope of that. So that segues into another conversation that we had that I do need some direction on. We had talked about the Oil Museum and the city's mowing of their property for the past several years. I did speak with the executive director and he was not aware of a formal agreement. It had been, my understanding and his understanding at the time was that it was an agreement whereby the city had originally provided funds to the Oil Museum and then decided not to do that, but elected to give services in lieu of. So I wanted to bring that before your all's attention so that we can get some direction on how to proceed with that. So that we had some guidance on what we were going to do and have some closure to that.
I would say give them $2,500 and let them hire somebody to mow their lot. For the $2,500 and get us out of it. Is there not going to be able to get anybody to do it for that price? All summer long?
They did not express the fact that they had looked or anything, so I don't know if they could or not.
But we don't have the manpower to do it.
They did offer to have us mow their property every five weeks instead of every few weeks. But depending on what the rain looks like, that could actually bring them into non-compliance, which is something we wouldn't necessarily want to permit it, obviously.
I would vote for, don't give them any money and tell them we're not going to mow it anymore.
We don't give them any money now.
We do not give them any money presently, that's correct.
I think they can afford to mow their own property. I think they have a very substantial endowment. And they can afford to mow their own property.
I think it's been a neighborly thing to do and it's been part of our, I mean, if we've been doing it, I'm not sure I know. Do we really not have the manpower to do it? I guess that's the question.
Well, the catalyst that kind of brought this all to our attention has somewhat passed because we've been able to quickly fill those positions faster than what we originally anticipated. And I did receive notice from the Cancer Department of Corrections that we will be, they are willing to come down and conduct a special training once we are fully staffed, which we anticipate to be within the next few weeks. So that may alter the decision that we elect to take. I think based on that information, we would be fully staffed and we would have the ability to take care of the property.
So what I'm hearing, we'd be back in and have our honor camp labor, perhaps soon. Is that correct?
Yes. Sooner than originally anticipated.
And I think, to me, I mean, would we anticipate it would be honor camp labor doing that mowing?
It will either be honor camp labor or part-time staff from the Parks and Rec Department.
I think under the, under the goal that it'd be primarily honor camp labor that would be doing that mowing, I think that's a very, very appropriate thing to be partnerships with.
It's not honor camp equipment, not honor camp gas.
As much as true.
I guess I kind of look at it like some of the other outside agencies that we deal with. That maybe they should accept some of the responsibility of mowing. Now, I'm not saying they have to go out through all those oil derricks and whatever, because I'm sure that is time-consuming. But they could be responsible for some of it.
We could ask them participate in the gas such to do it. But again, I think targeting honor camp labor towards that activity, and we are the facilitators of that, is completely appropriate. And if we could work out a deal where they help with fuel, then so be it.
Okay.
Where does our property stop if there's a big gas?
The parking lot on the east side, if I recall, is mostly ours. There are areas fenced. So inside the chain link everywhere.
Okay, so with that bit of information, what we're talking about is not mowing inside the fence? We would still mow the street side and like along the pond? Is that kind of what we're talking about?
Well, we would already mow around the pond, that's our...
Yeah, that's what I'm, but like on the...
Not necessarily. I don't think, if they were going to be responsible for the mowing, they would be responsible for the rideaway adjacent to the property.
If so, okay, so even that, we would still be mowing up to the parking lot? We're just talking about west of the parking lot, in the fence, and in the rideaway?
Right.
For a total of about nine acres.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I get, I'm just...
I would think that back there mowing around all those structures and rigs and stuff is probably pretty time-consuming.
Yeah.
How long will it take the city to mow it?
You know, Kevin's not here. Unfortunately, I don't have that number in front of me.
He told us.
He did tell us.
It was...
16 hours?
16?
For four people?
Four people, yeah.
16 hours for four people every two weeks, I think, was what it was.
Two large mowers.
Because it's...
It was quiet.
Because even if you use the inmate labor, you still have to have one of our guys there.
Supervising.
It was like Kevin said, it was every five... I thought it was six hours times two events, is what I remember and I may be wrong.
I remember in 16.
Okay, well, what about a compromise of, we take care of the street side and they take care of on the inside? That way, I mean, that seems like to me is the time-consuming spot. And if we're talking using inmate labor, that's, I mean, that, they could easily not realize they're screwing something up that's inside the fence. I mean, as a compromise from just cutting them off to help them out, we run the streets out and they take care of inside the fence.
How'd support that?
I mean, just to, it keeps them looking at compliance and then inside the fence, that's their problem.
How'd support that?
Do you need a motion or you just need a consensus from us?
Just a consensus would be preferred.
Is it a liability for us to be inside that fence since it's not our property? If we would damage something with one of our mowers, we would have to pay for it.
I mean, since there is no formal agreement, there is, yes, there's some ambiguity with respect to how that would work. You're, yeah, that's probably an issue that we've not actually thought about.
That's accurate, yeah. I bet you that one of our employees get hurt or something.
You know, run over a sucker rod or something.
Yeah, trail of a machine.
I think that's a good compromise.
And let's look, I mean, we put it in writing, we sent them a letter, this is what we're going to do. And you have five years and for us to figure this out, or two years or whatever, given. We're going to do it for this point, we've got to figure it out. I mean, it's mowing season, so it's good.
I wouldn't mind making it an annual thing.
Right, yeah.
Look at it annually.
So you're talking about doing it this summer, but next year they'll have to figure it out?
No, we'll look at it again annually. Make sure everything worked and been cool.
But you still want to mow it this summer, right? Not just drop them off?
He's talking about the split compromise this summer.
The split, I'm talking about the split. I mean, we do outside the fence and...
Starting this year?
Yeah. I assume that's what you know.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. I need to go on my route, so I understand.
I'm going to kill mine.
Can I assume there's a lot of weed eating?
Yes.
Around the derricks?
So they go in and they mow, then they come back and then they, or they finish mowing and then they weed. Weed whack it.
So really what Matt's asking us to take care of is not really a whole lot of hair, right?
It's, to me, it seems like it's the easiest spot for us to get a mower over there.
Right, right.
Get it done, probably half a day, three quarters of a day, if you've got, you know, got a lawnmower.
Okay, here's my thought. Chances are the Oil Museum is going to end up hiring probably teens during the summer to take care of it. Possibility.
Possibly.
Chances are they're cheaper though than... I see the inmates as doing a better job around the structures than a, excuse me, possible teenager would take more care in what they're doing.
Sure.
And I'm going to assume that that's what the Oil Museum wants. So I don't know that I would somehow break up the mowing and the weed eating. I don't know how, I'm just, I'm thinking. That maybe they hire somebody to come in and mow and then we send the inmates in to weed eat. I don't know, I'm just...
Yeah, I don't, we really want to get...
Well, maybe what we can do is, understanding that you all want to maybe form a compromise, maybe I can go back to them and say, you know, the direction I got from the commission was that we're not going to mow the whole property, but we're willing to compromise and maybe try to figure it out at that level and then bring something back. I mean, I think that might be the best way of doing it, instead of cutting out the property and...
I'm also thinking.
Yeah, and in my, I don't mind the compromise, I don't mind, you know, the city paying attention and mowing outside the fence on a regular basis, just to, because it's our interest also.
Just keep the aesthetic...
I mean, we want to, but I also, in my opinion, I think it's still a good service project for our honor camp labors, as long as we can facilitate that, continue to facilitate that, we should. If we get to a point where we can no longer have that resource, well, then that's a different discussion. That'd be my opinion.
Plus the fact that we can enter into town, it's important that it look good.
So, do you have enough information to...
More than enough, right.
To keep negotiating with them?
Yes. The next item I had, if you'll recall in the report on Friday, we, I talked about the sales tax task force. Since that time, we've had 14, we now have 14 people that have expressed interest by completing an application. The plan would be then to appoint that task force at the next regular meeting. So if you all can track down a few more people, we can get to the magic 25 or 24 or whatever number. I guess, it really doesn't matter, it's an arbitrary number, but probably the bigger the better. But we do have 14 now instead of six, so...
Could you maybe send us a list so we don't re-ask the same people?
We can definitely do that. Okay, send you that.
I'll send a new list tonight. We actually had another one add while you guys were in execs, so we have 15 now.
Okay, good. I've got a couple that I'm probably going to be submitting. I sent you a list.
That's in that 14 that we'll talk to you about.
Also, if you know of any women that would like to serve, we have, at this point...
That's the one I got.
We have one female that is on the committee or task force thus far. And because our community is primarily 50/50, in the interest of representation, it would be wise to maybe facilitate some of that.
The question I get is, what will they be asked to do?
So this task force, it would, will probably be asked to, first of all, look at some of the options that the commission has been discussing over the past couple of months. And then, once a decision is made on what direction to proceed on a sales tax ballot question, it's my understanding that the task force has been charged with marketing the sales tax to the community for the upcoming ballot. By state law, the city cannot ask people or encourage people to vote yes. We can only share information with respect to a ballot initiative that the city is promoting. So the task force's responsibility is to promote the yes voice, if you will.
So what I've been telling them is, we'd like their input on a recommendation on what the sales tax question should look like. And we've already, we've kind of seen some of those options, so... And then they become owners of that recommendation and then they are then our campaign committee, if you will, for the November vote.
So we put it on Facebook and then tell them to contact you, that was okay?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yes, you just can't put on Facebook, "Vote yes for the one cent sales tax."
Yeah.
Fake, fake.
We can.
Of you can, yeah.
Okay.
The last thing that I wanted to kind of get some guidance on, the, as you also recall in my report, the Train Depot sign was recently repainted and when it was returned, it was returned with a name of a new park. It was actually the Memorial Sculptures Park. And so the city actually has a policy with respect to naming parks. So staff is removing that insert from the sign for the time being. And we can take that naming proposal, that request, to the Recreation Board for their review. But at this point, I think it's not necessarily appropriate for someone to paint a sign and name a park without it going through the proper channels. So I wanted to make sure that that was okay.
Who painted it?
Well, Main Street had asked to paint the sign because the sign had said something like, I don't know, Train Depot, whatever, but Main Street Association, because to my understanding, they used to be located in the depot. So they wanted to repaint the sign for aesthetic purposes, but they also wanted to remove Main Street Association from the sign since they were no longer located there. And then upon returning the sign, it said Memorial Sculptures Park.
So we don't have, we have no idea who decided the name?
So Main Street put the name up?
I would speculate, yes.
They put the sign up, so they...
Right, that's correct.
Well, and taking it down until such time that we want to name it appropriately?
Yeah.
Right.
Or follow the process to get it named. Okay.
I guess I don't see that it needs to be named anymore.
It's kind of me too, but I'm...
Don't believe it's going to be Spoons or Park.
Rock Island Park?
And then the last thing I have is the, there's a, for lack of a better word, a grassroots effort that is looking at designing a city flag, probably with all the momentum that Wichita's garnered for their flag recently. There's an idea that, hey, we want to be just like that and have our own city flag. So this group has been... So, this group has been trying to put together a city design for a flag, and they've produced several different designs, but it's my understanding that the committee decided to scrap all of those designs, and they are inviting the general public to submit their designs, and they'd like to organize a community, in essence, the public will be able to submit designs, and then there'll be a community vote, and the top, I don't know, five vote-getters or whatever number they come up with will be pushed for further consideration. And the deadline to submit a design for a city flag is 5:00 p.m. on May 11th. So, if you're interested, or you know someone that is artsy and maybe would like to submit a design for a potential city flag, I would encourage them to do so. They can get in touch with Molly here at the city, 321-9100, and she'll walk them through how to submit. Now, I think there's also some information on the city's Facebook page as well. But this will be a fun opportunity for folks to get involved, and at the end of the day, we'll have a pretty good art demonstration of our different talents and abilities, so...
Ultimately, at the end of the day, any kind of official flag gets adopted by the commission, is that correct?
Yes. The, I think the group's idea is to bring the top vote-getter to the commission for consideration.
Yeah, good. I think that's great. I saw some of that floating around, and it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Yes.
Is our next work session going to have the same agenda as the one we had to cancel?
It will be pretty much the same agenda, yes. There might be a couple of items that are added to it.
That'll be the 25th? Any further business for the commission? If none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
We would adjourn second.
Second, if further comment, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, we are adjourned.